...of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, into this law for liberty and justice for all.
Okay, District Mission Station. Marjorie Keefe.
Sure. The mission of the Exeter West Greenwich Regional School District is to empower students to contribute to school and community by providing substantial learning experiences in a safe, trusting, and motivating environment.
Thank you. Okay, we are gonna move on to the next.
Yes, I'll make a motion to move item four, recognition and achievements.
Second. Polls in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have the recognition of the Gatorade Rhode Island Volleyball Player of the Year.
Did you hear that voice?
We're very happy to have this opportunity to recognize Jenna Bridges as being named the Rhode Island Volleyball Player of the Year. And we have some of her teammates here, her coach, Mr. Narzak, the athletic director, principal of the high school as well. This is a big deal. And we have news crews here from ABC because they are, they're going to publicize this event. And Gatorade contacted ABC and asked Nick Coit to make the presentation, so I'll turn it over to Nick.
Thank you. So as Duke said, I'm Nick Coit from ABC Six. I work in the sports department with Ken Bell, who I'm sure you know that name, great guy to work with. We cover local sports around the area for a living, you know, and that includes your colleges, your Patriots, your pro teams, but also the high school level. And Ken and I put a big, you know, stress on our coverage, on covering high school sports because we believe it's really important. And we're talking everything, every sport that there is in Rhode Island, you know, we try to cover it as best as we can. And while doing that, we come across some, some great athletes, some great young men and some great young women. And of course, the last couple of years when we've come here, we've seen Jenna play on the volleyball court. And I remember the first time I saw Jenna play, I went back to the station, I said to Ken, I said, "Who was that?" Because just the talent level was just, just exceeded what you've seen around the area. But the best part is, when you cover these athletes, you get to know them a little bit. And actually, I had the opportunity to sit down and do an interview with Jenna a couple of months ago. And you find out that they're not only very talented athletes, but they're, they're great people as well. And Jenna, obviously, great at the volleyball court, had 501 kills this year. That's insane. But also, sitting down with her, you can tell she's a, she's a great young lady, has the opportunity to, to play at the next level, go to the University of Hartford next year, which is awesome. So when Gatorade contacted me to present this award tonight, I said, "Absolutely, I'd love to." So I'm honored to be here, I'm honored to have this very heavy trophy, by the way, to present this to Jenna Bridges, the Gatorade Rhode Island State Player of the Year.
Good?
Yep.
Jenna, we have no more to be on behalf of the school and the school committee also.
Congratulations. Boy, do I feel...
Yeah, man, congratulations. You have many great things to do in your future, and I also want to recognize your parents because behind every great student, there's great parents. So thank you for your support and encouragement of your daughter. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, everybody. You can feel free to leave, we will not get offended. Hey, we love to share what's on our agenda with you. Okay, so we have open forum. If there's hope, why don't we wait for a while? Let's wait for two minutes. Just give us a minute, wait for two minutes. They're playing crowd tonight. If there's anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on something that's not on our agenda, they may do so now. Hi, if you could state your name for the, for the record.
Michelle Powers, West Greenwich. I have a left side, but I know I have a left problem, so I have, I'll give you this, sort of, I had something happen to, I have four students in this system, one in junior high, two in Metcalf, and one in Wauwuhu. And I got a phone call at three o'clock on the seventeenth, I believe, of December, it was Thursday. And it was from another mom who I knew who had a child in my son's class. And she said, "I don't know if you know this yet, but they put Nolan on the wrong bus." And I'm lucky I was home because I pretty much break out. He's in second grade, he's a lot of kids like him, he's very likable, and he has absolutely no fear of anything. He's, he's been in school for nine years since preschool, he's autism level one, he has sensory processing disorder, and, and he has no fear of danger, and he has no concept of time. I'm like, "Why did they put Nolan on the wrong bus?" And he said, "He said he was going to a friend's house." And he is going to a friend's house. I did not write him out, I did not call the bus company, I did not do any of that. So I, and I was surprised that I was the first, she, I was the first home contact for that, from, from Patrick. Melissa Moreno did call me, she apologized, it never should've happened, and, you know, I was passed out at this point, and I was like, "What are you gonna do to change it?" And I know that I have to present my ideas here, I have them written down, I mean, my story, Melissa Moreno was thinking that, they put him on a different bus, he didn't make it home, he rode on the other bus. Luckily, the bus driver of that bus moved away once. But he could've said that he was going over to a friend, because maybe I told him three weeks ago that he could do that. You know, he could've said that because maybe he forgot it was like the afternoon and not a weekend. He doesn't know days, he can only understand in this. And whoever was a teacher on, the staff in the cafeteria, either didn't know him or believed him, took his word for it. So, I have your policies number eight, three, ten, on elementary school dismissal, and I've got my ideas and a bunch of others that I need to get a petition signed to amend. That's right.
Thanks, Michelle, we'll grab those from you.
Okay.
This is yours. This is my number. Okay. Let's see, presentation, we don't have consent agenda?
Consent agenda includes the approval of our regular meeting and executive session meeting minutes from December eighth. We also have the appointment of a new teacher assistant for Wauwuhu to address some growing needs in terms of supervision and support of some students that have entered our school system. Carrie Galan, she is in the audience. We have our monthly bills, and that is everything. Consent agenda.
Any questions? Would you like to leave the recording from Holt? Okay, there are motions to move consent agenda?
I'll second.
Polls in favor?
Aye. Camilla is here, can you introduce Carrie, that'd be great.
It's my pleasure. Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to introduce Carrie Galan. Carrie comes to us with, as you can see by her resume, quite a bit of experience in different areas as a teacher assistant, as a behavior specialist at Pathway Strategic Learning Center, Perspectives, and those agencies deal with some very involved students. And to add to that, she's just recently completed her certification as an occupational therapy assistant, which is a wonderful thing and really added to her resume and her expertise. I did take the time to call a previous employer and ask some questions about Carrie, and these were the statements that were made. Carrie takes initiative, Carrie is a collaborator and works diligently as part of the team. She has a calm, caring demeanor, and she is flexible and willing to assist wherever the needs may be, so I think she's gonna be a perfect fit for Wauwuhu, and we're happy to have her.
Welcome. Can you get your... Okay, we have correspondence. We're gonna question our correspondence. Okay, 2015-16 budget proposal.
Again, the year-end projection, year-end looks, like with the cumulative fund balance will be positive, we're projecting around a $700,000 for the year-end for this year. We're waiting for the final number from the auditors for June 30, 2015 ending, but I'm feeling that that's a pretty good number that we're looking at on the sheet in front of you. Minor adjustment this month to the Medicaid revenue, and everything else is holding pretty steady.
Questions? Okay, 2016-17 budget proposal.
So this is the first draft, very initial draft of the budget. We are presenting information to you this evening, obviously you haven't had a chance to look it over, but the point is that we have the budget workshop scheduled two weeks from tomorrow. So this gives you time in between this meeting and the next meeting to look through it, we've provided you with the requests, again, the initial requests for each bill and along with the justifications for each of those requests. By the time we revisit this budget in a couple of weeks, there will be adjustments that have been made, and that's because we have just begun the process of looking through line by line, school by school, department by department, for efficiencies, for overlap. You know, in, in past years, we found that two separate individuals budgeted for the same object, and we delete one of them. There might be some requests that ultimately do not get approved. We look to make sure that everything is in here, if anything was missed, although I think we put some processes in place this, this year to make sure that we didn't miss anything. So this is a very, I think, a pretty comprehensive initial draft, but there absolutely will be adjustments to be, okay? What you have in front of you is the enrollment numbers, so you can see the breakdown based on Exeter and West Greenwich, broken down by students, by grade, by school. There's an historical enrollment based on October 1st numbers, you have the debt service summary as well. In the next pink section, you have a budget proposal, this again is a number one, is my one-page summary sheet, and the voter-approved budget from 2016 was $30,689,252. The initial draft for the 2017 budget is $30,802,735, round the off, which is a difference of approximately $113,482. That is the best place that we've been in terms of an initial draft in quite some time. Even if it stayed at $113,000 as an increase, it's less than a half a percent. We know, and the other thing I did was provide for you three categories of items, just to be aware of, that there have been some areas where there's major savings, and those areas are out-of-district placements. We have some students who have aged out on turn 21 and therefore come out of the budget for next year. You were aware, based on previous reports, that there are significant savings projected in career-intech tuitions. We had a, we have a very large senior class right now, and we're projecting the, based on the last several years, we're projecting an enrollment of new children, but it certainly does not equal the number of children who are out of our bracket this year. So there's savings in career-intech placement tuitions. You are aware that the oil contract was significantly lower, so that is now in the budget. And we know of two particular retirements that have already gone through school committee approval, so we've projected a step-five replacement for each of those, which we traditionally do. So those are areas of savings. In terms of additions, the school resource officer has been a shared responsibility of the town and the schools, based on the town receiving the grant for that program. Sergeant Patraca will enter his fourth year in our schools since his return to the schools, and the SRO, the full expense now becomes part of the school budget because there is no grand offset. We began to expand the preschool program last year, we added a classroom that is open for the AM session. We continue to have rising requests for community enrollment. We would much rather educate our preschool children in district, have them prepared to go to our kindergarten. So, so to continue that plan, the preschool classroom will go to full-time, we'll have a morning and afternoon session, they will both be filled. Part of the strategic plan is to take a look at foreign language at the middle school and provide an opportunity for full-year language experiences, which we currently do not have. There is a slight addition of some staffing, it's really just boosting up a few people from like an 80% FTE to 100% FTE, nothing major. There is an increased need for teacher assistant support at Wauwuhu. One of the new positions that's in the budget is Carrie Galan, who we just hired six months early, but the need exists right now. And we have a part-time reading teacher at Metcalf that we're projecting to go to full-time based on reading needs at that particular building. We've also included some estimated contractual increases, and they are estimated because contract negotiations really is just starting, and the results of the negotiations will certainly alter the, the actual final budget. There are some increased costs related to our science program, the kits have been updated, and because this is the first year of implementation, the, the initial expense is significantly higher than it will be in the future than it was last year. And this is the final year of our full transition to the technology plan. Currently, our 12th graders do not have a one-to-one device, they use devices that are available through, you know, we, we purchased some of the other devices that were in the elementary schools. So the incoming ninth graders get their devices, 11th graders move up, the high school will be fully one-to-one, our junior high is one-to-one, grade six is one-to-one, and our elementary schools will maintain a certain number of classroom carts per grade level. What I did not include, because it's really a wash, is that we are producing a grade six classroom, but we're projecting an increase of a grade one classroom, and that's based on current enrollment in kindergarten. So that is a wash, the teachers are certified one-six, there'll be some movement, but it is, there's an increase and a decrease, it's a wash. Items requiring attention, we have not accounted for any administrative salaries, salary increases. Again, we have to take a look at actual contractual changes based on the results of negotiations, and you can see in my status report that there are some variables that we need to pay attention to related to state aid and categorical aid. Those numbers are estimates, and we've not fared well in the last couple of years. We know that we are a district that, based on funding, current funding formula, projection, we will continue to lose state funding for the next several years. So, and there are, the funding formula work group that's meeting, and their recommendations are scheduled to be made next Monday, I believe is the date. So we need to pay attention to any changes that are occurring. There's, there's a lot that will happen between now and two weeks from now, but we'll be prepared to give you an update, you can, you can take a look at the progression of that, of that number, our actual proposed budget workshop. Then we have, a couple of weeks before, there's the financial meeting between the town councils and the school department, help provide additional updates. So many opportunities along the way where you could get an update on our progress as we continue to look line by line and make revisions. I know the past couple of years, and not that I want to stop you from looking at it because I encourage that, but in the past couple of years, people have been diligent about jotting down questions, and the questions asked, and we'd already found it and addressed it. So that's a good thing, when that happens. I anticipate the same will be the case. So we're not gonna go through this section by section because you need the opportunity to review it, but as you, if you just turn to the first section on fiscal obligations, we'll see that each pink sheet gives you a separate department, and then what you have is every requested item with a justification. So this is the report that gives you the rationale that the budget developers put in, and it will answer some of your questions. And you can see the, the adjusted budget amount represents current year, the requested amount represents the 2017 fiscal year, and there's a column that shows you the, the change. There's a change between the last year and current year request. So you'll see that for every different area, by school, by department, et cetera. And then, you know, if there are initial questions on the setup, I can take that. I suspect though that we want some time to review this, and the next meeting that we have on the 27th is really designed for a dialogue of questions that you may have. And just so that everybody is aware, on the 27th, the budget meeting that we have, every administrator in the district will be present, the special education director, the maintenance and technology, each of the school administrators, and those of us sitting at the table tonight. Yes, we scheduled the budget workshop, which has, traditionally it's been like a 45-minute discussion, and we can, we can spend as much time as you want, but it's not lasted more than 30 to 45 minutes for the past couple of years. We figured it's a night where everybody is already going to be here, we would need to schedule that, that discussion around prioritization of capital needs, we scheduled on the same night, so...
Okay, the monthly subcommittee report.
There is an enclosure for the policy subcommittee, this is something that you're used to seeing, I imagine, but you'll notice that there are, three, four, five, six policies that are, that went to policy subcommittee, we met on January 9th, and they're in the process of being revised, they'll probably be ready for the first meeting in February, and that will put us at a place where we will have 16, a total of 16 policies left. So we've been working on this for a long time, but you see a light at the end of the tunnel, and we will finally have our entire policy book completely updated, and then, and then we'll just, we'll make sure that we maintain that policy. So we're down to 16 after this, this round closely. Okay?
Our goal is to have a four meeting, so...
It will be this year.
Obviously, whole projects, you'll get done, just in time to start over. I appreciate that.
Okay. Ken Bell's having a report on the subcommittee. I'll set there. Monthly status reports. Any further questions or comments?
Next question, Mr. Ross. So with the, with regard to the extension for the audit, can you do us more details on that?
Sure. So this year, there is a, a new, so GASBEE is a organization that issues proclamations about what kind of reporting needs to be done. GASBEE 68 is a new requirement this year for government entities to report out on pensions. Folks who are doing that work are the actuarials, the actuarials are, they're swamped with that work. We used the actuarials at this point in time to do GASBEE 45, and, you know, when I looked at the chronology, it was like, it seemed like we were hitting our marks, the school committee approved the bid in May. We corresponded in, at the end of May, we corresponded with the audit, with the audit firm who does it for us, USI, they're out of Connecticut, we had given them the information by late September, continued to email back and forth, and then it just went off the grid for, for essentially a few weeks. And I actually had to, you know, and now we're into the budget soon, and we're into the audit season, and I was starting to have the angst about it, and, you know, kind of my worst fear was that, you know, they, it swamped, and we were in the back of the queue. Now, that is not just a nice narrative, it was a recognition issued by the Office of the Auditor General for Rhode Island, where they granted extensions until early January to, for all of Rhode Island because they knew there was a backlog, but still, you know, we settled on the February 5th date, and in part, it's a timing thing, it's to make sure that, you know, we work around the school committee meetings to a degree. So there was, well, we could try and rush it and get it for the second meeting in January, but then if we don't get that one, then it's another phone call with the auditor general. So we just aired on the side a caution when we're February 5th. It is not a reflection of the treasurer's office, it is not a reflection of the, of the audit firm that the school committee allowed us to go out and redid that. In fact, I think the audit process was really, really, for our body of work was excellent. This was just another one of those things, and it's a, you know, it's, it's a hollow feeling when you gotta make those calls, but they're necessary, that's part of the job, so that's kind of the background.
So the firm that we use for our auditing is also the same firm that's doing the actuarial reports?
No, no, Bacon and Company does the audit, USI does the, does the actuary evaluation for us.
So is the audit otherwise ready?
The audit is otherwise ready.
GASB 68 is a new requirement this year for government entities to report out on pensions. Folks who are doing that work are the actuariaals. The actuariaals are, they're swamped with that work. We use the actuariaals at this point in time to do GASB 45, and, you know, when I looked at the chronology, it was like, it seemed like we were hitting our marks. The school committee approved the bid in May. We corresponded in, at the end of May, we corresponded with the audit, with the audit firm who does it for us, USI. They're out of Connecticut. We had given them the information by late September, continued to email back and forth, and then it just went off the grid for essentially a few weeks. And I actually had to, you know, and now we're into the budget season, we're into the audit season, and I was starting to have the angst about it, and, you know, kind of my worst fear was that, you know, they had been swamped, and we were in the back of the queue. Now, that is not just a nice narrative. It was a recognition issued by the Office of the Auditor General for Rhode Island, where they granted extensions until early January to, for all of Rhode Island, because they knew there was a backlog. But still, you know, we settled on the February 5 date, and in part, it's a timing thing to make sure that, you know, we work around the school committee meetings to a degree. So there was, well, we could try and rush it and get it for the second meeting in January, but then if we don't get that one, then it's another phone call with the auditor general. So we just dared on the side of caution when we went February 5. It is not a reflection of the treasurer's office, it is not a reflection of the audit firm that the school committee allowed us to go out and rebid that. In fact, I think the audit process was really, really, for our body, where it was excellent. This was just another one of those things, and it's a, you know, it's a hollow feeling when you've got to make those calls, but they're necessary, that's part of the job. That's kind of the background.
So the firm that we use for our audit is also the same firm that's doing the actuarial reports?
No. No, Bacon &amp; Company does the audit, USI does the actuary evaluation for us.
So is the audit otherwise ready?
The audit is otherwise ready. However, having said that, this is, you know, it's becoming a bigger and bigger requirement, you know, they're reporting out of the OPEP, and that's what they're going to provide to us, which is, you know, central to some of our discussions that will be ongoing, you know, is how we're going to fund that. So the trial balances are in-house work, that's all complete. We get this OPEP piece of information, that gets folded in, and that becomes one element of our, of the management response to how you, you know, how you address your OPEP liability, which to this point has been paid as you go. You're looking with the...
No, with that, thank you. And I don't know if the forecast is real or not, but do we have snow removal plans in place?
We have redundancy in our snow removal. No, we've been, we've been, that's just been a hot topic. I think we have everybody in place that we need, and... That new truck. The first winter in a long time, we've had three maintenance in the groundskeeper and...
Full staff.
Full staff to deal with it, and all the right equipment, so we're ready. Yeah, like the Dunkin' Donuts commercial, it's like, it's a snowfler!
Good to hear. Thank you.
Anybody else? Good point. New business? We have the class of 2017, senior class trip to Virginia proposal.
Okay, well, I would like to turn the floor over to Mr. Stephen Gardner and let you all know that today is his birthday. And I can't think of a better way to send your birthday.
We went forward to the class about a month or two ago and made you both to learn what they might want a senior class trip to be, and this is one, actually, it'll be the third time I'm going on it down to Virginia, but it's a great trip for the kids. But my favorite thing is that security is mandatory in Virginia hotels, so at 10 o'clock there's somebody outside the car just going, "Go to your room." I'll tell you what, that is just sweet. If anybody's done a chaperone, you know, that's a good deal to have. But they have a great time. Bush Gardens is, you know, the educational aspect of it, it has so many different things going on. It adds to different countries, for one thing, so it has the different food, the different types of music, the different type of dance, different types of rides, the basement, the different types of mythology. There's a little bit of background on all those things. There's some great shows that they put on. There's science, you have English shows there, you also have Paul Eagle and Clivesdale. Technology that goes along with it, they have, I don't know if you knew this, but they have right-hand Apollo's chariot play. They have absolutely these sound devices that scare away the birds on the, if anybody ever heard of what happened to Fabio. The first time they had the Apollo's chariot go down, and Fabio would be the model for it. And so he came, gets to the top of the thing, drops 60 miles an hour, and a bird flew right to his face as he coming down, like a snow ride. And the birds did not do so well on Fabio's special bloody, but now they have actual technology. So if you take the little steamboat ride, they actually tell you about that. So they learned about that. There's, they go on their little senior dance potty cruise, it's down in a historic area, and there's somebody on the, well, first of all, bus pride will tell them as they get there approaching all the students in that area, but then once they get on the boat, until they get to the area where it's going to be where the potty starts, they get a lot of background as well. Last time we went there, we took 80 kids, that time before that, we took 80 kids. It's a highly popular trip. The kids usually have a great time. I like the fact that we have buses, they can change seats, they can change buses if they actually have a problem. We try to keep it affordable for everybody. And the other thing that I've done is I make sure that all the tips and gratuities and any other thing that they could ever forget about is taken care of at the price, because kids not like the bus. Keep the bus private, or the hotel staff unless you take care of yourself.
That's a great idea. Yes, it is.
You know, it's our school and it's not district, and when you go in for a place, you don't want them talking badly about us because...
Right. We've gotten nice reports, we've got letters about places in the state.
That's, so that's, that's the thing behind that, I just think that, you know, I hope they always know that they are ambassadors for the store and the district when they go out, and, you know, we want to leave people with a good feeling about that vacation they're on. So that's essentially the trip. The other day, we go to Water Company, which is one of the, I think it's now the third largest water park in the nation, and it's basically a big circle, so you can't get lost. But they just have a great day.
Great opportunity, thank you.
And note that this is the senior trip for next year.
Next year.
For reporting with the parents.
I'd like to have a meeting with the parents this year, I don't know what course of duty and how they can weigh in on it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
Make a motion to approve the class trip of '17.
Yeah, 2017. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Happy birthday to me.
Have a great day, folks.
New 2017.
Thanks.
Okay. We have the Outdoor Adventure Club's ski trip proposal.
So you also have in front of you the first ski trip that we're planning to have in a couple of years now, right? Mr. Mastriani is the Outdoor Adventure Club advisor, and he will talk to you about the proposed ski trip.
So we're going to Jay Peak, which is almost in Canada, on March 18 through the 20th. It's in-between sports season, so we can get the most students to go. We had signed up our 30th student today with five more, asking if they could still sign up. We're going to cap it at 40, I think we'll get close to that. We're taking off on the 18th after school, bus up, spend the night in the water park, day in and day out of the water park. Night in the water park, two days skiing, and another night in the water park on Saturday night. Pizza, we had a dinner, we had a play, we're going to do a pizza party on Saturday night to save money, we're supposed to be eating in restaurants, and we're going to do breakfast in the hotel as a group, and then lunch will be on their own. We're planning on taping the doors at night, taking away card, hotel keys during the day, so we're on the mountain from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., when we all go back to the hotel. There will not, we will not have a bus, we're up there, everything is shuttle-based and on the resort. So far, we have Jennifer and Steve Larson and Chaperones, Barbara Willmott and myself, and now that we're up to 30 people, I will be adding two other Chaperones, and then if we add the other five, another Chaperone on top of that. It's a good group, big group. Pretty excited to actually have everyone to...
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mastriani. If we have a moment, oh, I'm sorry, what was the method of transportation again?
Bus, cycling tours out of Newport.
Okay, it's not on the permission slip, so I just wanted to...
Yeah, it's under...
Is it on one of the...
It's on the...
It's on the attachment. Okay. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Tony. Okay. Us and the business?
We're going to reserve that discussion to the 27th because the purpose of that meeting is to prioritize capital leads, and hopefully we'll have some final numbers in terms of the audit, we can fill out that spreadsheet.
Okay, reports and comments? Okay, important dates of meetings. So we have school committee on 26th, budget workshop on the 27th, along with capital asset discussions, school committee meeting, school committee meeting on the 9th, 11th, is the joint meeting of the town councils on the 23rd meeting, and, oh my God, I'm rushing.
Are they all at 6? Is the 27th at 6 o'clock as well?
The 27th is not busy. I'm sorry, I'm rushing.
Like, what time is the 27th?
Oh, 6 o'clock.
It is all 6.
Yep. I'm, the joint meeting is at 6. The joint meeting is at 6? Yeah.
They all are.
Okay. Okay, we do need to go into executive session. Let's be in here.